The United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God. In this world with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call please.
Mr. Puccio?
Yes.
Mr. Prattis?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Swift?
Here.
Nine, Chris.
Uh, we have any more reports this evening? None? We move very straight to student council. Awesome. So, student council, go ahead. Okay, so we finally started blood drives again. And the first one we have is October twenty first. And there's like a, yeah, anyone is welcome to come donate between ten thirty to three P M. And, and we just started out at Brownies again, as you know, we haven't done them since Covid.
Awesome.
Yeah, and we're doing them for home building.
Awesome.
And so basically, Apple Fest is the last Cookies for a Cause opportunity that we're gonna have. Um, it is sometime during October, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure it's like early October as well. I'm not exactly sure what the date is though.
For Saturday.
But yeah, that's per Saturday, thank you. And that's the last thing we're gonna have it. After that, we're gonna donate all the funds to St. John's. About it? Thank you.
Do you want to give your name?
I'm Castle. All right, good day, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
They haven't done it like that.
We're a closed session, closed session for legal, personnel, and security.
What would be important to me?
Uh, moving on agenda, public comment, agenda items, is there anyone in the room wish to have public comment on agenda item number? Seeing none, I'll look at the Zoom world, is there anyone on Zoom wish to have public comment agenda items? Is there anyone on Zoom who wish to have public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Thank you, sir. Full second.
Third person, second, board discussion comments? On favor, on favor, I? Opposed name? Stack carries. We're gonna be personnel kind of random here, we're gonna one through three. And then five through seven. And nine and ten. Have a motion?
You have a second?
Board discussion comments, turns? On favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed name? Uh, under personnel, can I have a motion for number four?
Steven, sir, move.
Megan, second.
Seven, first, and a second, board discussion comments?
Megan, do you have another second? Did you abstain?
Yeah, that was last week.
Last week, okay.
Just thank you for the volunteers that signed up. We need to take a roll call back.
That's roll call please.
Mr. Prattis?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Um, Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Puccio?
Yes.
That's eight, yes, and one.
Thank you. Under main agenda, under personnel, can I have a motion for number eight?
Steven, sir, move.
Megan, second.
So have a first and second, uh, board discussion?
Let's give a little explanation of what this is. Folks, this is a thank you to our support professionals. So, thank you very much to all of you for your hard work dedication. Throughout Covid and through the last year. So there'll be a supplement, mental payment made them, made to the support staff for, um, their past service. And also for a program for them to refer new employees. And there's a payment for that if they're able to refer new employees at that state of the business. So, um, thank you to the whole group and so thank you from school district and sports staff.
Any combination from last year and this year?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit of that.
And I feel that these thoughts are often overlooked, I know there's a lot of history with the support staff here at Mars and things that happened in the past, but I'm very hopeful. This is a fresh start, maybe it's a, you know, almost completely new board, new student tenant, new school solicitor, new business manager. Uh, we're very appreciative of the hard work that we do to keep our schools running.
We do have openings, we are looking for folks, uh, does anybody please refer that we can certainly use to be, uh, employees?
Very, thank you, have a call please?
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Puccio?
Yeah.
Mr. Prattis?
Yes.
That's nine.
Thank you. Moving on to the main agenda, uh, under finances, numbers. One, three twelve, have a first and second?
Yeah, someone?
Have a second? Board discussion comments? On favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed name? Stack carries. Under main agenda, other project, programs, have a motion for number one?
Yeah, but he still moves.
The full second.
I have a first, second, board discussion comments? On favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed name? Stack carries. Under building, buildings and grounds, number one, can I have a first and a second to table?
Megan, sir, move.
Can, but he's second.
Oh wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So Megan first, Anthony second. Uh, board discussion?
So Dr. Chris, if you could just reach out and spend maybe three, um, you know, three groups trying to get votes, I feel like we may be able to get something cheaper than what this one is?
It's a small job, so. We can get additional votes to table.
Any other board discussion? On favor, I? Opposed name? So we'll table that and you'll look into your points.
Yes, please.
Under others, on the main agenda, numbers one through eleven? Have a first and a second? Have a second? Board discussion comments?
Congratulations to the hometown IQ two groups for their, um, board statement. Great job.
Thank you, Dr. Rose again.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
No, that's right, sir, third year, third amendment, right?
Wonderful.
And not, and not only did she do that, but she did like a ton of donations to CEO, she did lunch for teachers one day, and she's so kind.
Very great. On favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed name? Stack carries. Um, number twelve?
Yes, so I am going to be to approve the request of high school student G to take B, he's an online school course for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. At the cost of the district as presented, approve the request of high school student G to take free and enroll university courses for the twenty-two, twenty-three year at no cost of the district as presented.
Second, second? Judge with the first? Kevin was the second? What? On favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed name? Good luck with that first.
Now you're giving it away.
Hey, sorry, that was just, yeah, I thought that was added. Perfect, so that's added to the agenda. Now I can have a motion to approve.
Yeah, this is a move. Justin, so.
That's approved, done agenda. Any more discussion? Seeing that, on favor, I?
All right.
Just say you're ready.
So we're off with public comment, open forum. Anyone in the room wish to have public comment? Anyone in the room?
Yeah. So, um.
Just need to say your, your address. We'll have three minutes.
One forty-one, four side road. I would be just curious, on more of that stuff, we're just curious about what, uh, the plans are, if any, to address the issues on the varsity baseball. Along with the drainage and, um. Size of the field and things like that nature. Is there any?
We, we did reach out right after, try to get, because we know that overseeding, the spraying and the, um, aeration is needed. We have an individual that's.
Okay. My concern is that if you spend the money to work on the infield without actually getting the water, like fixing the grading prior to doing those things, it might just be like a waste of money. The grading issues need to be addressed prior to, uh, you know, any maintenance on that because of the way the water ponds on the field. And that's really what prohibits the play. I mean, the rough, rough surface is one issue, but, but the water's sitting there, and so it keeps us off the field. So, we feel that that's what, that, that needs to dress prior to like the maintenance, like the outfield's good to go with the, with the fertilizer and the aeration, but, um. We feel that the, the, um, the drainage is an issue. It could be handled with simple grading and possibly re-sawding of the surface.
Yeah, we have John Wesley and Randy Smith, sent them, the first thought. I don't know where I got it, but we were here that maybe drain was broken or something like that, but I know he, they checked that out.
Yeah.
We also talked about the need for, for getting the dirt. We just aren't there yet.
I understand.
At the last meeting, we got the aeration, the seed overseeding, the spraying, we got that bug.
Okay.
So we're working through those other issues, including the drainage and the dirt that we brought up last.
Right, so, uh, to get the water to drain off the surface of the, of playing field, it's like we brought up around the pitcher's mound and then like sloped away. I went out, I'm in construction myself, and went up with my laser transit and just took some measurements and some simple grading would, would take that water off the field and handle those issues.
I can make notes to share that.
Yeah. I could share with whoever is involved, if I could, uh, talk with whoever, give them the information I have and, and Brett Schultz as well.
Yeah, that would be great.
May I? Yeah, um, Brett Schultz, I don't, I didn't sign up, but.
Here, hold on a second, come on, cancel him. Just say you're up, you have to say your.
Schultz, one one eight, Rainbowwood Lane, North. Um, I don't have to get a reading of, support what Gary said, but also specifically ask, given the time of year, I also am in construction. What is, what is happening this year? Because if we don't do it, if it doesn't happen in the next fifteen to thirty days. It's not gonna make a difference, given the time we've gotta start playing, but we, the, you know, the students need to start playing come March thirtieth. That's, that's the real reality, that's why I'm here, right? It's, I know we all think, and when, when are we running all this time? If it doesn't happen in the next thirty days, you might as well not do it. So that, that's, I believe you said there's a plan in place, like just.
He was actually ready yesterday, I don't.
Okay.
I don't, it's like within a day.
Okay. And I just wanna make sure with everybody in the room under.
And just so you know, what one of the delays is. And the delay is, when, when you spray, there are certain pesticides, when you spray, you have to, you have to announce. So, as of yesterday afternoon, I was having Lori Boggs reaching out to see what's being sprayed before I authorize.
Okay.
Because if it's. It falls under the certain types of thing, like.
Correct.
We'd have to, I think it's a three day. You have to announce it for three days.
Select a herbicide and depending on which exact products, depending on company, three days or up to ten days.
Yes, I'll go in tomorrow, I'll know.
Then goes back to the timing of everything.
So, yeah, that's a little bit of holdup, I said, before we say, because he was ready to do it yesterday, like, I need to know what he's spraying.
Okay. Again, that's aeration, overseeding.
Yeah, now I'm hearing the grading.
I just see that money spent, and it's not gonna change anything except for the.
But it sounds like if we get that, the next step is that grading.
Well, the great, the problem is, is that you would have to like cover over everything that you just did to get the, to, to get the grading out on the end, on the infield.
Yeah, for bringing this.
So you would essentially waste, I don't wanna see waste of money, if, if that could go towards like the bigger fix, if, if. If that's possible.
So I made my part, but I was thinking the aeration, seeding and.
To Gary's point though, the last, when we were here before, with turf was being, I mean, there was an entire field renovation process. I'll be honest, none of us expected that one point five million dollars is gonna be allocated.
Kind of like an intermediate would be an intermediate way to fix the problem for the midterm.
Sure.
Or like immediate to like, maybe up to ten years or so, this, this would fix a lot of the issues at a, at a fairly reasonable cost, you know, maybe from like twenty to thirty thousand would, would give you a new infield.
Pre-grading, essentially laying new sod and then the maintenance issue to be, you would also be able to get it back to the size by laying new sod. And you would be back to square one, where a maintenance program then would be highly effective.
We also talked too, when we get into the overseeding and aeration and about those fall type things. We're trying to get a company that will basically put us on a schedule. Where they'll do that and do this off, so when they're here, they just, they get them all done. I don't know how that works, whether that's three days, three times a year, two times a year.
Typically two, would be the spring and fall, would be the aeration for.
Well, six.
But it also, that's also. I suppose it's just good every week. Now.
Okay, that's what I'm out of my.
There is a process to, you're applying a different cocktail, to your point, Patrick Rose, about what's going down now. You're gonna put a, a product down in the early spring before crabgrass even begins to develop, that's gonna prohibit its growth.
So that's what we're trying to get someone that can come in and keep us on a cycle. And that's gonna depend on, I, I.
But, but four would be the minimum, so front controls in there. Two fertilization apps, crabgrass, uh, pre, you know, pre, uh, pre-emergent application goes down. Um, I'll be more than happy to provide a bunch of names and people who do this for a list. Um, and I actually wanted to back up to item twelve, which was, and I have no idea what the hundred and twenty-eight point eight is with curb split. If that had anything to do with the, um. Modifications to the area behind the, uh, the, uh, the backstop and the high school. Uh, I've heard, I'll, I'll be happy, I'm not wrong on that. We, that, that is where it came from. It would be more than happy, I'm sure I don't need to talk coach and to have a conversation. How is it best, you know, where they're the most, um, where he's there the most, but as far as parents, spectators, and where do people actually stand? Where do they sit, how do they get there? Obviously, our job is not to be forward, but it's maybe some in, you know, some, some insight that the board generally may not have because, you know, you're not, you're not there all the time, and, and he is. Uh, well, unless, can I speak for you? I, I mean, I, so.
You know, what I'm trying to do is, is have the channel through our athletic office.
Sure.
And then I can, I'll be involved, because there's so many things going on, like the fields, I want our maintenance. Yeah. So, if we can funnel that through, and then I, I've already talked to Zach, Zach will be communicating with our buildings and grounds folks, working with me. So if that communication could go that way, it'd be great.
First, whatever we.
Alright, so your, your next move is to contact the A D or to contact the buildings and grounds for the, the grading there.
Yeah, I have to get on that one.
We, we have, I, we do have some like estimates and things of what that would cost if the career center, or if the A D's interested.
Yeah, if you would, if you could go ahead and send them.
Absolutely.
If I, I mean, I don't know. But. If that project for space, like that, we have purchasing guidelines that we're supposed to, we have to follow. So if that is a twenty, thirty thousand dollar project, it needs to be bid out, so we're not gonna be able to get it done in thirty days, because we're gonna have to.
Well, it could be done in three separate phases.
It would have to be bid.
Yeah, you can't.
We can't, we can't break it up to.
What is it, twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one nine is the threshold when you.
That's a little good.
We have three quotes, it's something twenty-one nine.
When you shot the field, I don't know who, you were, did you shoot the whole field or just the infield? So we just shot the areas that were, where the water, the water's moving everywhere else, and just in the areas that the water is problems. Just in your assumption, that's a professional question, because I don't wanna record you to this, but raising the infield, knowing how flat that field is to begin with. We're way too flat to begin with. And this, when we raise the infield, we just put, just water behind the base lines of the outfield, it's just, it's been more drain up there, we're just moving. No, essentially, we're not, half the field from like, uh, second base to first, that water moves nice out in the outfield, then rolls down the outfield. Um, so the problem is really from second base to third, where it's kind of, uh, you can even go there to see like, how the, the material has slumped. And so, and, and so it kinda need, if you brought up the back of the pitcher's mound, essentially from the spine of the dime, which would be like from the, right down from the home plate, pitcher's mound, second base. And then, uh, brought that all up and send that towards third base, and it would drain up there with that. And then it would drain off that, yeah. I mean, there is.
You're right, again, I.
That would, that would help tremendously. And then the thought was to, to just re-saw it everything, because the issues would be out of compliance with the sign, you could lay the sod and it'd be right to your, instead of trying to grow grass, you would be right to your size and everything, and problem solved, and then you can start your maintenance program with a fresh slate.
So W is saying, perhaps have three quotes under twenty-one nine, if you wanted to work the A T, maybe, you know, who knows what you could find, otherwise it would have to be bid out, so maybe you have to do the overseen aeration this year. I mean, if these are questions like, start researching with A D and see what.
Yeah, we have to.
Somebody was, was, was willing to volunteer to do something, that would, that possible? Like, what was the?
But just to, to reiterate, I thought what the plan was, was we're gonna figure out a way to make sure we get through this year, but through our process of looking at all of our buildings and grounds. We're going to decide who looks forward, what the plan is regarding the baseball field, if that's the best location, what we want the field to be moving forward, like. I think we're talking about multiple different things, where we need to break this up into pieces about what are we doing this year to make sure that parents are not out there, you know, having to maintain this field as well as making sure it's safe for the students. But we're not saying that anything else is out of the question, because we're paying so much to tell us what the best options are for our students moving forward. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So Dr. Chris, my takeaway is, is if people just look at, if we need to raise that. Maybe the stuffs just need to be altered a little bit, I don't know.
That would still be potentially a small, short-term fix. That would even fix it for immediately, two, yeah, two, two, ten years. With, anything else we was knew, I mean, by the time you would actually execute that, that would be. It would be, yeah. My concern is if you start, if you don't put the money towards like fixing the water issue, you're just kind of like wasting your money essentially, if you have to do that anyway. And then it's not fixing the water problem, which is the reason they can't get on the field anyway. The rough play is one, is, you know, that's kind of the issue with the, with the aeration and the overseeding fixes, like the rough infield, which is a hazard for the balls bouncing, but. The issue that you can't even play is the drainage is probably the number one issue. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the experience, Tom. We appreciate it.
Everybody back their head for me. It's no more board discussion in the room, let's just jump. Baseball?
No, no, I just came to, came to watch. I thought there would be more people.
Does anyone, uh, on the Zoom world wish to have public comment? Does anyone on Zoom wish to have public comment? Is there anyone from M A E A wish to have a comment? Is there anyone from the association?
There, there won't be.
So the comment from the association, there's no comment?
Yes.
Uh, administration, Dr. Chris? I, nothing in this. Dr. McMahon?
Um, we can talk about last week with you about our after-school program regarding S R Fund. We're gonna continue in the same fashion that we did last year, so at the secondary level, we're pushing out a survey to parents or any students interested in having mathematics. And I hope instead of put the teachers at the secondary level, you know, on a people-based call, of that you will get fit for studies, um, both teacher and students. As for the elementary, looking at our staffing, we're going to have, um, after-school learning rockets, and that's gonna focus on the literacy in the primary center. And that program based on our staff availability, that program is going to run on Mondays, and we're pushing this survey out for confirmation of participation to parents tomorrow. Additionally, we'll have an after-school program, the Comic Club, and that will be at the Centennial Building for grades five and six, and that will be leading support as well as the mathematics, and we're pushing that survey out again tomorrow for confirmation of participation. Not interest, we'll look at the confirmation of participation, because we're going to get the program up and running starting with first week in October. In addition, something just a little bit different is regarding a snack, uh, this time, because we're not only a whole three months program throughout, um, so we're gonna have that, students are asked to, and we ask them, you know, if you need a snack, we'll do that after-school program. But again, so parents look for the Comic Club coming out of the Centennial Building, the survey's coming out tomorrow, and look for the primary center, the learning rockets, that survey will be coming out tomorrow. And when parents respond to the survey, again, it's responding for confirmation of participation, and that will be a program up and running first week in October. And this will take us through December, and then we'll survey it again, just because our staffing changes and their after-school programs with their own kids and their family obligations change, so then we'll do another program that we can run again in the spring. So look at that survey coming up tomorrow. And at this point, um, staff at the elementary building, we just didn't have enough, the size of the building, there's nine hundred seats, um, we didn't have enough staff to run that successful, but maybe in the spring, so we'll try again in the spring. But the survey will be coming out tomorrow.
Definitely, what, what night is, uh, Comic Club?
Comic Club will be Tuesday nights, and then again, that's based on staff, staff availability, and what we can do there. So Monday night for the primary center, Tuesday night for the Comic Club at the Centennial.
Thank you, Dr. McMahon. Uh, Ms. Brandt Center? Dr. Meyer?
Um, just some updates for, uh, gifted, special ed, all that stuff. Um, the two parent advisory committees, I met with, uh, both sets of officers two times over the summer, so a total of four times. Gifted, uh, we have a parent training on November eleventh at the L G I. I have five meetings scheduled with that group, um, during the school year, and we are arranging for more training for the parents during the school year. Special ed, um, we also have a family bash on Sunday, the twenty-fifth. Um, sort of a hundred people are available to come, I think we're up to like eighty-eight slots, so it's most full. Um, we also have five meetings scheduled, and we're also arranging for trainings this year as well. And, uh, applications for both those committees, that closes on this Friday, sixteen. Special ed updates, um, so far this school year, we're at a hundred and forty-two requests for evaluations. That's initial, we allow speech, five oh fours gifted, teacher re-evaluation with a record review, that's at thirty-six right now. Um, over the summer, we were very busy, we completed fifty-six evaluations in our office. Um, as of today, there's been one hundred and thirty-six I E P G I five oh four meetings this year. We had thirty-seven students in special ed gifted or five oh fours transferred out of the district, we had nineteen move in. Right now, our number of special ed students is five forty-nine, gifted on eleven, five oh fours eighty-six. We are currently interviewing for a part-time speech therapist. Um, we're, we're doing the applications for the school psychologist and a behavior analyst. Access is up and running right now, the staff pulls in the calendar, they've been approved for certification. Um. I don't know if anybody noticed, but we updated a lot of information on the gifted, uh, people's service, and special ed website, uh, webpages of our website. Um, there's the booklet I gave to you folks. Um, special public notices, uh, all the notices for the district. Um, I'm gonna review one more time for errors, Josh will post it on the website, and then we're gonna fill out ten copies in all the offices of the schools. Um. New teacher training, I trained all new teachers, uh, special ed teachers on writing I E Ps and R Rs over the summer. All the teacher observations for special ed are scheduled throughout the school year. I don't know if you had a chance to see the sanctuary walk at the primary center, uh, that's been installed. Uh, we're installing another, uh, smaller one down by the support classroom, and then during the service day in October, the M A E one's gonna be installed there. So all three will be installed in a very short time. The middle school life school support teacher and the gifted support teacher, they're working together to start a cafe that will have similar to the high school. It'll be at the middle school for teachers to buy coffee during the school day, and then our coun, our counselors, social worker, and, uh, mental health therapists. We are all reviewing social emotional learning curriculum, that's being reviewed throughout the school year, and we will have a recommendation at another school year for the teacher. That's everything for.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, curriculum night at the high school is tomorrow evening, so parents, uh, welcome to come, meet the teachers, um, we did email the list that will be available, like, you know that. You don't have to come, and you can hang out with me in the cafeteria, I'll be there. Um, homecoming is quickly coming up, so we will be sending out, uh, the spirit weekdays to, uh, elementary and middle schools, if they would like to participate, that is the first week in October. With the parade and football game being on October seventh and the dance on the eighth. Uh, student council voted to have the dance again on the football field, they liked it there last year, so hopefully weather will cooperate with us. Um, it was pretty cool under the lights and, uh, having a stage on the field and things like that, so, um, if weather does not cooperate, we will be moving into the middle school, thank you, Mr. Colson for hosting us. Um, starting student activities tomorrow, so we are trying to start that up pretty quickly this year to give students some opportunities to explore different clubs and activities. Um, and we run that almost every Thursday throughout the year, so that will be starting tomorrow. And had a lot of good changes this, uh, year, exciting, uh, new hires. Um, so what we missed, the people who are no longer with us at the high school, because they also did many great things and many years of great service. Uh, the new athletic director, who I think you've already had a chance to meet, and the new assistant principal, Mr. Scally, have been great additions to the team, it's a pleasure to work with them every day, so. Alright? Great. Nice to have kids back in the building and starting. Nice to have kids back in the building and it's starting to really feel like normal. Like I know last year, we said it was starting to feel like normal, like this year feels really great, so it's a good year.
I echo a little bit what you said at the end there, what Lindsay just said. This has been a really, really great start to this school, uh, very smooth, from a voting perspective, I believe that this is one of the best starts in the past two, three years. So, um, I'm happy to get back to one more and acknowledge everybody else's too, so it's, it's been a fantastic start. Um, I want to thank the school board, um, and the district on the, um, access road project. It has worked out very well. Um, I think the public has noticed, uh, the amount of traffic. Off of three degree road a little bit. Um, we'll thank all the district personnel. That's not without a township to lay it out a little bit as far as signage and, uh, right, right turns out only. Um, and try to get used to, uh, what the access is going to look like in one to two years, but be two, twenty-eight of it. So it's a, it's been great. We worked out all the kinks, I believe, as far as parent pickup, parent drop off, off, off access. That's, and everything is moving, uh, safely, so thank you. Uh, I also will have, uh, most school will have a curriculum night this Thursday, um, from six to eight P M. The teachers have gone out for that program. And, uh, it's a great night for parents to see exactly what's going on in the classroom, a nice little summation and overview. And then ten minutes from the, from the teachers, uh, and, and allowing them to showcase exactly what their curriculum, their child is going to be exposed to this year. We will start our activity days at the middle school, October sixth. We're right now putting our activity menu together, rotations for that, that means every other Thursday. And we're currently conducting our student council, student government elections, uh, with presidents and vice presidents for seventh and eighth grade, along with home reps. We will conclude all of that by giving the bunch, um, and then we'll start our activity.
Thank you, Mr. Colson. How much?
Nothing.
Uh, Mr. Warren, hi, in the corner. Nothing yet?
No. It's best pretty straightforward for technology to allow that this year is the one that built the ground this year. It's run pretty well. You're a big guy and a pretty interesting copy person.
Seems like the iPad program, a couple of things they mentioned this weekend really rolled that out well.
Yeah, we, we are able to increase those numbers. I think by next year, we'll almost be fully one to one of the districts. Of course, everything blows up the first thing, so the Wi-Fi went off the documentary, really, you know, that's, that's fixed.
So with that connectivity, that additional wired connectivity, we'll be fine. And then when we add more to it next year, we'll.
Our wireless has been scoped for basically every room in the district from the beginning. So yeah, what we find from that perspective, at worst, we'll have to increase internet bandwidth in the future, which is just always.
We got new copy really working, working well.
Yeah, they actually took to them much better than I thought they would. Um, my previous district, we went through a similar, um, situation. So now you badge out your jobs. Right, or I like to call it the Wild West, you could print in six hundred pages, spit out, somebody might take up the copy or somebody might not. Uh, now you have to be present to get your job out of the copyer. And it's actually been going really well. The teachers, um, like that there are not tons of jobs sitting everywhere and that they're responsible for your stuff.
If they need to print, pick up later, they'll do that.
Right.
Pick up anywhere.
It's much more secure then, so there's not data possibly sitting out there. And sometimes you print and you don't actually need it, so if you don't get it twenty-four hours later, it goes out of queue. So the papers are here too. I like that, yeah. Pretty good.
Anyone? All right, four comments. More comments this time?
I want to thank everybody for all their hard work for getting this smooth, um, start of the school year. Um, I think this is my first year on the board with the start of the school year, so it's exciting to watch and I just appreciate everybody's hard work. And then baseball, um, I think for bringing all this to our attention and working with us and, um, hopefully we can get all of that resolved for you.
Uh, work on that side? I'm just jumping sides. All right, this side?
Something, and your children play, so it's going to do all of the kids, you know, every week we recruit these lists of volunteers, like all these parents who want to come in. After their house or three, so.
I would like the, uh, the parents who play on the place up there, up there at the time, the one, the one.
That was our dear Casey.
Thank the, uh, support staff, studying pairs, recruiting. There's somebody that needs a job. I hope it's, that he manages that accrual notice.
Any other work on it?
Yep, me. Hi. I want to say something. Um, I'm going to, I really want to thank the teachers that are doing the after-school programs. As parents, students, we appreciate you, students are getting the extra help that they need, so thank you for just giving your time to helping out. And also I'm going to shout out to the girls' high school soccer team. I found out today that we are number one in the nation this week. And I think that is just amazing.
Great, thank you. I have a motion to a trip.
Megan, so.
Okay, Ryan.
I.
Have a great evening.